I'd like to call this meeting of the Cascade Charter Township Zoning Board of Appeals to order. Today is Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. Jennifer, thanks for filling in for Tom for today's meeting.
Just call me Tom.
Okay, Tom. Would everybody please stand for Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I have a motion to approve the current agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 8th, 2023 meeting?
So moved. Support.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Article five, I'd like to now acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak on non-agenda items. And your comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Anybody want to come up and give us comments? Anybody online? Okay, then let's move right on to Article six, case number 23-3783. Sutarov, did I pronounce that correctly?
Both.
Okay, okay.
I just asked them before the meeting.
The first letters probably.
Alright, so we have the Sutaroffs here from 3680 Buttrick. They are requesting a variance to build in their front yard. They have a corner lot, the corner of 36th and Buttrick, the southwest corner. They are presenting a setback of 96 feet. And the home is set back 212 feet, and I'm talking about south of 36th. So the variance would be for a 116 foot variance to place that accessory building in the technical front yard. The building does require two-part approval, so if they are approved for their variance tonight, they will then need a special use permit for the square footage exceeding 832 square feet. The use of the building is for storage of personal vehicles and other various items, so personal storage. Considering the findings of fact to grant a variance, we did see that they are coming across a kind of unique situation where they have a corner lot and their home is where their home is, they can't control that. So where they'd like to build seems like a backyard to them, but because of their corner lot, it does technically sit in the front yard. Beyond that, they did not create this hardship for themselves and they have indicated that they've set it back to be screened so that it's a minimum variance that they're requesting. As you can see on the site plan, there are some things they're trying to avoid. There's the well and the drain field and then the water to the south. The granting of the variance would not be injurious to neighbors. It's in our ARC district, so it's around more rural properties, larger acreage. They have almost five acres and they would be permitted more than one accessory building. This would be their first. Homes in the area have similar accessory buildings. So when I considered all of this, I was comfortable recommending to you guys that you would approve the placement of the accessory building as long as they're meeting our township standards when built to adhere to our lighting standards and to not use the building for a home occupation.
Do members have any questions for Madison?
No.
Okay.
Um, Jimmy?
Would the owner like to come up and tell us your side of the story?
So this is the first time I've joined the board. My apologies. So if I don't say something right.
Don't worry.
Excuses. So yeah, we're trying to build pretty much an accessory building, a garage.
First of all, what's your first name?
Alex.
Alex and you're?
I'm Anna.
Alex and Anna. Okay, welcome.
Alright, thank you. My apologies again. So yeah, we're looking for a variance to build a garage in our property. That is primarily to store some of our accessories. We have an RV. We have a few jet skis and a boat. Just want to get that out of the elements and out of our front yard. We have two front yards, so it's a little odd. So we're just trying to get that and get it stored and secured. So that's kind of the request here. We checked with Madison. Madison, thank you for walking us through the process around what sizes of the building. I wasn't exactly sure what's allowed and we try to keep it reasonable so it's not tiny enough, so it doesn't accommodate what we need and not too big, that would not be approved.
So it's 40 by 70?
It's 40 by 70.
Okay, 2,800. Okay.
Correct.
Is there any upper storage areas, balconies?
We're not planning on doing storage in the upper area. It's going to be an open scenario, primarily just to be able to fit the RV in. So because of that, there's going to be no storage in the building.
Okay, and the garage doors will face the north?
There's going to be one door on the side from the entrance that's going to be on the west side of the building. And then there's going to be garage doors, one large one to fit the RV, couple other ones for the boat and the jet ski.
On the north side?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so garage doors on the one side and then it's like a person entrance on the west side.
Correct. Yep. And then we kind of already have a mini driveway there. And I say that because that's where the utility company gets sent to get access to the electric lines.
They've made a driveway.
They've made a driveway over the years, right, right? And that's the same place where they used when we were doing the drain field. That's kind of how we access that site from the north end of 36th Street.
Okay, members have any questions?
Alex, have you had any discussions with the neighbors to let them know what your intentions were?
Yeah, we've spoken with Jeff that lives just down the street from us.
Pretty much across.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
We haven't spoken to the Williams about it, but.
They're the other way though.
Yeah, they're on the south side of the property. I'm not sure.
Well, I don't know. They are neighbors.
Right, we don't really have too many neighbors because of the corner lot. But we have spoken with Jeff and he showed that he's in favor.
Yeah, my understanding is he emailed. I'm not sure if she received that, but he did pop by and we had spoken and he said he had no problem and certainly recognized the weird situation of our lot. And then of course, as Madison mentioned, it's more rural there. I mean, we have a lot of trees on the property. I don't, I mean, I personally don't think it would be some giant eyesore around us because of the acreage and then the more trees and foliage and stuff, which we like. Kind of feels more secluded and.
The Williams property does kind of circle us a bit.
That too.
But yeah, I didn't know.
I forgot about that. But they go back around.
Yeah, they goes kind of on the east side of the property too.
I have a question. Will installation of the building impede the access to the drain field or to the well by the contractors who sort of kind of created that?
So not necessarily. They just did it, they kind of cut their own path there. When they were getting access, that was the most easiest one, but there's enough space to get around that also if needed be. Plus, we also have entrance from the west side of the property. I don't know if you can see in the image with the driveway. So there are several spots that just thought it was the easiest one to cut down trees and got access that way.
I mean, I think the previous owners had done something because they had a little gate in that same spot and it looked like they had been using that as well to access the back of the property. And then when they were taking down a bunch of trees, the utility companies just cut the gate.
Yeah, there is no more gate there. They just kind of.
Biggest owner.
Right. It's, yeah, it's open now.
Other questions?
I just would like to be on record letting everyone know that I was their former neighbors.
Yes.
Lived to the west, so that one of the people that they haven't talked to, but I can genuinely say I know their property quite well and the location that you're requesting absolutely makes the most sense from every angle.
Yeah, we tried to find a neutral spot.
Yeah, just wanted to be sure that was stated.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'd appreciate a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion for open.
Motion in support, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Would anybody like to come forward and make comments and talk about this? If so, please give us your name and address. Anybody online? Okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Can I have a second? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing closed. Further discussion among members? And I have.
A motion that we take into account staff's recommendations and make a approval for case number 23-3783 with the conditions that it meets the township's lighting ordinance as well as that the accessory building is not used for a home occupation. Second?
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Okay, I'd like to now move on to Article seven, case number 23-3788, Blue Water Pools. Madison?
Hello, we have Blue Water Pools here tonight on behalf of the address 5824 Golden Hollow Drive. They are seeking a variance to build within the required side yard setback. This is kind of a unique application. There was some background with the building department and Blue Water Pools where they were eventually told by the building department when they were there for a separate inspection that the already built pool house needed a building permit because it exceeded the square footage. And when the application came in, we found that it also was not meeting the setback. So they are here today pursuing a variance to be able to keep the pool house in its place that it was built. The proposed pool house has a setback from the west. Well, it's kind of like a northwest on the parcel. Their side yard is 6.4 feet and the required setback for the height that they have is 10 feet. So they are requesting a variance of 3.67 feet, if we want to get very specific. The findings of fact that there are exceptional, extraordinary conditions or circumstances inherent to the property. I couldn't say that there was that situation here because it was built prior to having full approval from the township. And these circumstances did come from actions taken by the applicant subsequent to the zoning ordinance. Considering if this is the minimum variance, they have this is the minimum variance they're requesting as it is already in place. The granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. I can't be totally convinced that it wouldn't impact the neighbors. They do have some landscape presented on the plan to provide screening between the two properties and the homes are kind of staggered in their parcels, so they're not directly next to each other. The situation is specific to this property as the requirement for building is to first obtain zoning approval to prevent building in the setback. So the recommendation is that it be denied because it was not properly applied for. But if the zoning board of appeals would like to consider approving it, I did give a list of some conditions you might want to consider. Our typical ones of making sure the exterior lighting is meeting our standards, that it's not used as a living quarters and that we may add an additional standard that they add more screening of landscaping by the pool house so that it is more screened from the neighboring parcel. You have any questions?
I do.
Yes.
In between the, it looks like six shrubs on the west side. Appears there's a pool filter or a pool heater.
It's the equipment, yes.
Okay, and that is not screened in any way because it's just too tight?
Right, so my recommendation was adding as much landscape as they could to screen this, that area on the west side. So you could add that as a condition, I would say, to put more landscaping.
And there's a fence along the property line?
Yes.
What kind of fence?
I believe it's like a black metal.
Chain link?
Not chain link. The applicant might be able to confirm.
Okay.
Yes.
Madison, with regards to the billing department, have they reviewed the actual construction and determined if it is a conforming construction application, i.e. puddings foundation?
So the building, I have the building application here, but it's just on hold because of the variance request, so it hasn't been fully reviewed by the building department.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we did receive a letter from the neighborhood association that I forwarded on to you guys. If anyone needs a copy, I can give you one.
And the pool house is built? It's complete?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So yeah, they were originally told if it's under 200 square feet, they wouldn't need a building permit, but would need zoning approval. And then a separate inspector was at the property, I believe, for a mechanical inspection and noticed the pool house was, had a gazebo that would qualify as square footage. So it exceeded 200 square feet, so then they were advised to get a building permit, which is how it came before us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Madison? Thank you. And I have the owners, the owner come up and or?
Yeah, we have Blue Water Pools.
Blue Water Pools, can they come up and tell us your side? Name. Hi, can you give us your names, please?
Yeah, my name is Michael Perey and the president of Blue Water Pools.
Okay.
Justin Taggi, the project manager associated with this one.
Okay.
And Yvonne Roush, designer.
Okay. Well, we're a little surprised at the fact that the setback doesn't meet our normal requirements of 10 feet. And we're just wondering how this came about. And maybe you can give us some background on that.
Well, that was a question I had for Yvonne when this first happened too, so let her.
So for starters, yes, when I looked up at the township, I was under the impression it was under ADA, which has on there for a three-foot setback. So that was a confusion on my part as far as where that would start. But I did understand that it needed to be 10 feet as far as the pool as well. So I had those unmarked on there as well. So then that was a miscommunication that wasn't caught. That was the start.
Okay, appreciate the honesty.
Yes.
So in September of last year, I submitted this site plan right here that shows our equipment as well as our pools. And as you pointed out, the equipment, even though this permit application was approved, is within that 10-foot setback. So I had just submitted the permit application for the pool and the pool equipment. So in February, I went to Cascade Township to drop off my permit application for the pool house. And I dropped it off to Bill with Cascade Inspections. And I was told that because the enclosed structure of the pool house was under 200 square feet, that there was no need for a building permit. I showed him the designs that our builder came up with. I showed him the site plan as well as the measurements, the heights and the setbacks for where we were going to put this. And he told me that again, that we did not need a building permit for it as long as it conformed to zoning. I was never told that I had to take the permit application to zoning. It was just as long as it conformed. So fast forward to June 22nd of this year is when our, when the electrical inspector was there looking at the pool house for our electrician and he notified, the electrician notified us that we did indeed need a building permit for the pool. Yeah, for the pool house, I follow this. So shortly after that is when Madison got ahold of us and she told me that in order for this pool house to comply, it needed a building permit and it needed to go through zoning. And I think it was about a week later is when she found out that the pool house was actually completed already. So her best advice was to plead our case to you and hope that we can find some lenience. As Yvonne mentioned, this is a, it's a simple misunderstanding and I'm hopeful that we can come up with a simple fix. In regards to that fix, Yvonne does have a handful of things.
I do have some images. I don't know if you want me to present them to the.
Yes, please do.
They'll help a little bit more visually, just to kind of give you an idea. And I apologize, they're kind of small. But so from the street, you've got the house with the driveway. Can you use the help a little bit for them? Okay. Thank you. Actually good. So from, yeah, so that's going to be Circle Drive in the front. You can see you have a driveway going up. And then from there, you're going to see five yard pool house. There is some landscaping in front, kind of leading up towards it and then also behind. And then let me get a little closer up. And there's your fence as well. You can see ornamental fence. And then what we're proposing is the way that it is from the neighbor. Well, now we have to zoom out. That one? There we go. Okay. Thank you. So it's just a quick rendering, but so you've got their house with a pool and this is the neighbor that also has a pool. He has right now currently seven tall arbs, maybe about six to eight feet tall. We're proposing to add an additional six to seven arbs. That would help screen it. And then the top picture is a view from their pool, the neighbor's pool looking across. So I give you an idea, it totally does screen out that area as well. And the neighbor loves this idea, likes the idea of that as well as us just making sure that it's recreated. We've got the irrigation connected back together and then we have this lush green screen.
Well, it's a very creative solution to the problem, I'd say.
In regards to your question earlier about the actual pool house, on July 18th, I had Cascade Inspections inspect the pool for its final inspection. And Bill told me that he wouldn't even have to come back to look at our pool house because he looked at it when he was there and it looked bad.
Good.
So how deep are your sonotubes?
Sonotubes, what we did was.
42.
Yes, 42 inches.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to say that, you know, we weren't trying to pull anything here. We had the pool house on the very original plan that we submitted to the township. When we submitted for the pool, we just didn't have the design for the pool house completely finalized as far as the architectural elements and how it was going to be constructed with. I mean, it does show a structure the same size as what's there now on that original plan. I was, I'm actually kind of surprised that it didn't come up, you know, previous to like when the pool was reviewed, when I addressed that with Madison and she said she was only looking at the pool on the plan, nothing else, so. But yeah, we definitely weren't trying to like pull anything here. And I personally talked to the neighbor and he's, he's very open to this idea. He loves it, so. Well, I appreciate you folks being very forthright in your explanations here. Does anybody else have any questions for Blue Water Pools? Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'd like to now open it for a public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody who would like to come forward and address this issue? Anybody online? Please give us your name and address.
Todd Ripley, 5815 Golden Hollow Drive, just across the street from Kathy's house. And I also represent the HOA board as a treasurer.
And I'm Chuck Van Loon. My address is 6865 Golden View Drive. I also sit on the board with Todd, acting as president of the HOA.
Great. And welcome, welcome.
Thank you. First and foremost, it's a beautiful project that fits into the neighborhood very nicely. As a board, we submitted a written documentation to clearly outline the requirements that the HOA has for any project like this that requires submission to the DRC Design Review Committee, excuse me, and review and approval for the design element. It does not include any setback requirements. We refer all questions, concerns, placements to the township. We don't offer that advice. And we want to be very forthright with the board that we have a wonderful community in full alignment with the board or with, excuse me, with the township. And any questions related to placements outside of design will always come to you. We stand neutral on this and support the decisions of the board. Your board, not our board. And just if you have any questions regarding our processes, we'll be happy to answer those.
Do members have any questions?
Aaron, thank you for coming in your professional capacity, now your personal capacity. You both are neighbors individually of the, of the project. Would you care to submit your personal opinion of it?
Personal opinion, I started with that. It's a beautiful project. We do not see from across the street into the backyard. We we moved into the area because of the size of the lots as a to, just to have room. The placement, this 10-foot placement seems reasonable. And I really have no comment negatively against the project other than we have ample sized lots that variances shouldn't have to be requested. And that's the board's stance on that as well. They're, they're large lots that shouldn't require variances.
Any other questions?
And that's a, that's a personal comment.
Okay. Do you have any personal comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay, alright. Well, thank you for coming forward. I'd like to entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Is there anybody online? Okay.
Support the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. Further discussion by members?
Question of staff, was, was there any conversation potentially with Bill? To see if there had been dialogue direct regarding the construction?
Yes. Yes.
As far as prior statements that they had said he didn't require?
He had said he didn't require a building permit, but always tells people to get zoning.
Okay.
Other questions?
No.
Like to entertain a motion. Somebody have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the variance that staff has recommended, subject to the conditions. One, all exterior lighting adhere to the Cascade Charter Township lighting standards. Two, the pool house is never used as a living quarters. And three, the proper landscaping be added to screen this pool house from the neighbor's property immediately adjacent to.
Thank you, Lou. Can I have a second?
Can I, uh, add an amendment to that, that your state's no less than six everybody is be added to the landscaping for screening, so knowing?
Any other amendments, additions? Okay.
Support that?
Great. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article eight, any other business? Article nine, can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Six o'clock. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.